A lot of what Kevin had put together is basically verbiage that was from the other one. It was basically reorchestrated. And I looked at it from the standpoint of that you shall do this and things of that. So, yes, I softened it in a way that would say things like we encourage or, you know, we would allow things of that nature in there because what I think we're gonna run into based on my discussions with our supervisor is that, let me try to find an example. Where it would say... You know, I don't have a good example right now, but it were, it would say that you have to achieve this. It's just, it's really hard to put a handle on some of this stuff. So, the other thing I did was I looked through Dan Taylor's comments relative to some of the little items and put those in there also, but so I, you know, that's my two cents on, I guess, where we are at this particular point. The other part of what Dan Taylor put together had to do with, of course, Table A and B, which is kind of the meat of the PRD ordinance system, where you want to go with densities. And of course, everybody has this document that's from Freddie that's in blue, which kind of outlines where we are with the densities. My two cents on PRDs is that the purpose for the PRD is taking a bastard piece of property in Pennsylvania that has a lot of wonderful environmental features to it and trying to preserve as much of that as you possibly can while allowing a certain level of density. And I think we all agree on the board that the current PRD ordinance, I'm gonna say, was overutilized by the developers that have recently done it. That's what I could phrase it. Where that we're getting plans with, I guess, in my opinion, a mixture of or variety of housing units that just don't make any sense. You know, having a plan with one single family lawn, it's almost a slap in the face is the way I kind of look at it. Whereas if you look at the PR, the Blue Run development, which is they're basically all the same houses, but they're structured on smaller lots and they provide for a greater level of open space. In my opinion, it's my preference, again, I'm not a town supervisor nor do I sit on a tight leash with you folks, but it provides for a very wooded, to me, environmentally friendly development at the end of things. So, the task basically before the planning commission is, you know, what are your feelings relative to this and how do you want to develop the land versus?
When you say environmentally friendly, are you talking about less disturbance typically and also the benefits of the buffer area?
Yes, but I think more importantly is making sure that if it has a wonderful stream going through the property, that we, that the developer isn't allowed to grade right up next to the bank or to reroute the stream or something like that. To make sure that the detention facility is tucked in such a way that it's not a nice one or a hazard for that matter. To make sure that the deer that used to go through this particular piece of property still have that opportunity. I mean, things like that is the way I kind of look at it.
That's pretty hard to specify though, huh?
But let me just put the twist on it, which is as you tip the scales of density and developers go with more conventional Saldos or subdivisions, everybody, that piece of stream that we're trying to preserve and make sure that everybody can utilize, now it's in the backyard of somebody's yard. So, the retreats that were once in the, that would be there for open space is no longer there for everybody to enjoy. Even though, you know, we've heard comments left and right about that the piece of open space that the developer gives to the township or to the homeowners association is a piece of crap. I mean, it's, it's all pickers, it's all steep slopes, it's totally useless. In our terminology that we use, that's the word passive, open space, but again, it's, this is, your job is to kind of weigh out all of these different thought processes. The one that we recently heard at the last planning commission that I think needs further consideration is, what's the word I wanted? Adjoining parking areas so that as we create a smaller density, denser footprint, that there's some type of auxiliary parking someplace. And if somebody's having a party, then everybody's not parking on the streets. I think that was a very good input from...
With a pervy surface.
Yes. Even if it doesn't have a...
But that's what we talked about.
Pervy's surface, yes, sorry. But I think those are excellent ideas as far as making sure that when there, somebody does have a party or it's Christmas or whatever, or for that matter, that the public works department has a place to push snow for that matter. Those little things. So, that's my two cents on where we are at this point and I'll let you guys have at it.
Go down the line.
Taylor?
Yeah, I get to go first.
Yeah.
Well, the comments I made about this really was based on the concerns that have been voiced over the last ten or twelve years whenever a PRD came forward to signify. And, you know, there's nothing that says you have, I mean, the actual footprint of the developed portion of the PRD is denser than it would be, but the total density does not have to be any greater or any less. So, you know, the suggestions I made on Table 4A and B basically were to allow the same, basically the same number of units, although I did provide for some trade-off if they left more open space than what we would require. They get a few additional units in there. And I also dealt with the setbacks because the way the table is written right now in this document, single-family residents can be closer to the street than other ones. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense, especially if you look at what the setbacks are for straight development. Now, maybe the setbacks don't have to be as great, but they need to be at least, I think, at least uniform. And we need to deal with the problem that Hartwood Meadows brought forth where you add a PRD at the end of the development, how do you make a transition so you don't get a sudden slap in the face? You know, so I addressed that with some of the comments I made here. A few other things would just, comments like I noticed, Dan, I'm looking here on page three of your document, you use the term DBH. And I prefer the term three feet because if you do DBH with Shaquille O'Neal, it's gonna be a little bit more than DBH if I was doing the walking.
Well, the industry standard is DBH.
But what does that relate to? Is it a fixed amount?
No, every person could, it's gonna vary, but that's the industry standard.
Okay, but if we, we can also specify that we want a three feet or three and a half feet or whatever.
Sure.
Another change I made in here.
Yep.
And then I also threw in a few extra things that I become concerned about, like maybe setting a minimum square footage for the dwelling units so we don't end up with a PRD with tiny houses on it like they're doing in the city of Pittsburgh in some places and some other areas. You know, the trade-off really is the actual amount of grading and infrastructure the developer puts in, it could be, could be reduced greatly from what a straight development would be. You know, if he has a thousand-foot-long roadway just to get into the plan, it may not work out that way, but if he puts dwelling units in pods here and there and they're fairly close together and the rest of it's open space, he's gonna save money by not having much infrastructure. Long run, the township saves money because they don't have this long road to plow, they don't have to maintain it, there's much storm surge and all that kind of stuff going on. So, that's where I kind of came from. And I, you know, Dan put a lot of the comments in here, but I think, you know, we need to maybe take some time to read through what Dan wrote on the money passed out tonight and then maybe see where do we want to incorporate some of the other comments. And I'd really like to hear from Preston being the real estate guru that he would be, you know. Right now, I'm looking, you know, people wanna build a big house on a huge piece of property or they wanna build a big house on a smaller property, don't have to worry about maintenance, because they're not interested in the landscaping and gardening and all those kinds of things and having a big swimming pool and stuff. So, we need to hit, where are we really going with that? And where is the industry going so we can maybe craft that into here? That was my thoughts.
Yeah, I have to really echo a lot of Dan's thoughts and one of the things we were interested in again was how some of the adjoining municipalities deal, particularly densities. And I have to thank Chris for all the work you did in helping us with that. And I think, you know, overall, you know, I would like to not allow any significant increase in certainly in PRD density as compared to conventional subdivisions. And, you know, again, including after comparing us to some of the adjoining municipalities, some of the information you gave. And I think the reduction in densities, Dan, that you've floated at this point for in this Table 4A, for example, and that's frankly kind of where I was when I first started looking at all this. Frankly, it's very similar to where you are, Chris, I think, in your analysis of this. So, again, I think, you know, I'm pretty much with Dan here on some of his inclinations at this point. I think we just need to, as you said, look at this more carefully with the specific additions.
Some of the verbiage Dan Slickle put in here, I mean, I think that makes good sense.
Yeah, and, you know, you also suggested, and I would agree, that the minimum open space be increased from twenty to perhaps thirty percent. And that we take out some of the, you know, what's included currently in open space that's clearly not usable. The only caveat I would have is if we make those kinds of, you know, frankly needed but drastic changes, do we practically eliminate much of the possibility of developers wanting to do a PRD in the township? I'm not saying that would necessarily change my view, but I think we should think about that so we at least know if that's what we're doing as a result of these, particularly density reductions. You know, I'd like to at least have some sense of that.
But the only thing I would add to that is we had also talked, and I don't know how it would bear out in our final numbers, but we would talk about having the flexibility to say a developer would meet some other conditions, whether it's open space or not developing or staying away from a certain area, that we would have something to kind of, I don't know, for lack of a better word, maybe give them a little reward, maybe a little bit increased density if they follow other things that we would, maybe not a hard and fast rule, but items that may come up that might be particular to a given area. So, we can say, well, if you do this, if you do that, we'll give you a little bit back to it.
Well, I pulled some of that in there.
Yeah.
If you increase the amount of open space, that he could get a bonus on the number dwelling is a small bonus, basically ten percent increase.
I think we're all pretty much in agreement to get the numbers at least comparable to a standard development.
And I think, you know, when you look at us, do any kind of development, things like streams, wetlands, whatever, DEP deals with a lot of that kind of stuff, so, you know, that's a bit out of our hands. You know, we don't want them destroying the stream or putting it through a call through it or whatever or moving it. We have DPP says that that's okay for you to do it.
I think they're pretty restrictive on that stuff. I think they're pretty restrictive on that type of stuff.
General.
Kevin?
I have thoughts.
Go ahead, go ahead, your line, that's what you're for.
So, let me start with this. I'm not necessarily opposed to increase density if it results in significant savings in open space and other important natural features. It takes fifty, sixty, eighty years for a tree to mature, so it's a lot better off if we can save that tree as opposed to having a conventional subdivision of having that tree replaced by a stick that's gonna take that long to grow. So, we need to, I think the saying no to more density is the wrong way to think of this. We need to think of where the increase in density is attractive enough that a developer will be willing to make those sacrifices in terms of developing the plan to preserve what we want to preserve. And it's probably just preserving that, that, those areas that I think are most important. And I do wanna thank Chris for what he provided, that was very helpful. There are some other examples, and, you know, I know I referenced this in an email, I'll just bring it up again. Marshall Township has what they call a conservation subdivision program. And their estimate according to their planning director Nicole Hansen is that they have preserved fifty percent more land by developers following that program than if they had a conventional subdivision. And she said, most developers in Marshall Township are following those standards because they do get a significant increase in density, but they, as she put it, were getting infinity homes, a custom home on a postage lot. So, you're right, we need to hear from Preston on this, but I don't know that we should just start off with the proposition that density is bad. Density is only bad if at the same time we're chewing up a lot of land, okay? If we're preserving land in the appropriate places, then I think, I think a little bit more density is not necessarily bad.
That's kind of what I'm saying, but not as any fair a fashion. Could you hold on one second?
Sure.
Jack, we're gonna run out of tape here real soon. I'm gonna like call, I think we are...
I can be quick.
Okay, well, go ahead, we may interrupt you if the tape runs out.
Okay.
You don't have to be quick.
The only other, the only other sort of comments I would have is, I just wanna make sure I understand this thing, Dan. This is something you put together, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, excuse me if I sound like I'm being stupid, but I just wanna make sure I understand it.
Good.
The left-hand column under SALDO, that's what a conventional subdivision on a ten-acre parcel, all of the things being equal, you could develop, correct? And everything to the right of that is the current and proposed PRD.
The current is the current PRD.
The current and then the proposed is what's under consideration, separated out horizontally by the three different zoning districts of PRDs. Okay. What is, just so I have it in my head, what is net area and buffer area?
So, down below in the little, so the net area is, is if you take the twenty percent open space, this little block down here. So, twenty percent of ten acres is two acres you have to set aside.
Okay.
So, then you would take the detention basins, which let's say is one acre, you would subtract that out, so your net area is seven acres divided.
Got it, got it.
The buffer area is to take what I just said with the open space, the detention basins, and now subtract out the buffer area you're after too.
Okay. Without making this chart even more complicated than it is right now, would it be possible to, or maybe I'm asking a question that doesn't make any sense, if you develop something under the conventional SALDO requirements, is there any deduction for open space or detention basins? No, okay.
Now, in the new SALDO that we did, the detention basins now have to be in either an easement, which is what the township requested, or my old method, which was a separate freestanding piece of property that was dedicated to the township, where the way that the new SALDO was structured is that the detention facilities are on an easement or in an easement.
Okay, so is that another way of saying that under the conventional zoning, if I have a ten-acre tract?
Yep.
I don't have to set aside any area for open spaces or this, okay, all right, thank you, that helps. My last comment is, and this goes, maybe I'm probably too far specifics, but I took a look at your, this thing that you sent around or that was included in the package. It's sort of a typewritten list of your comments to the previous draft. The only, the only one that I really wanna quibble...
That was mine.
Oh, that's...
That's it, yeah.
Oh, I came for that, okay. The only thing I really wanna quibble with is in terms of the supervisor's ability to provide modifications or waivers, putting, it's only a little word, but putting the word or in that sentence.
What item are you talking about?
It's actually in the very first introductory paragraph and then pops up a little bit later. The way it read before was that the supervisors could grant waivers or modifications where the applicant showed that literal compliance with mandatory provisions is unreasonable, causes undue hardship, and where the applicant demonstrates that alternative will provide equal or better results. I think if you put the or, where, if you put the word or in there, you're kind of throwing out the requirement that they show a hardship. And I really don't particularly want developers playing games with this. I think they, I think they should come in and say, here's your requirements, here's why we can't meet them, and now we're proposing an alternative as opposed to coming in and saying, here's an alternative. It's probably overwatering it, but that's, that was the first thing I thought of when I...
You wanted to explain it.
In whole, in a whole, and I want to show, and I want them to show why the adopted standards don't work.
I think it really says that, but, you know...
Yeah.
Maybe my English teacher will have different views than your English teacher, but I don't...
Well, our mess of white grammar, that's fine.
And, you know, I, what you said before about align greater density when they do things we want, I could agree with you on that, but how do you define the things we want that will stand up in a court case? That becomes the hard part in the thing.
I think if they're, I think if they're objective and they're not unreasonable, you know, for example, if we say you have to preserve ninety percent of a lot, no courts go on that. But I think if it's something objective, twenty percent, twenty-five percent, and it's reasonable, I think that's, that's defensible.
So, the easiest way to do that, and I was looking at the way you set it up there, Dan, so let's say, for instance, you take that twenty percent and then in that Table A or whatever it is.
4A.
4A. What you would do is you'd sit there and say, if you set aside thirty percent open space, you can take that density table and bump it by ten percent.
Which is basically set.
Yeah.
That's started with thirty and you say if you go to forty or more, you just bump it right down.
So, you just put a little note underneath Table A that sits there and says, it's like a, like a sliding scale basically, that if you, if you give twenty-five percent open space, you can bump it ten percent. If you give thirty percent open space, you can bump it fifteen percent, those numbers. And what happens in that equation, which is the good thing, is let's say, like, these gentlemen here have presented that, that piece of property that basically dropped off sixty feet and then go a little bit further and it drops off like another fifty or sixty feet down to the stream or whatever that could be. They're, they're stuck with a piece of property that you can only have that little posted stamp where they wanna put the well site. So, in that particular case, they may be giving fifty percent open space or seventy percent open space because they're only using that little, now granted, in that particular case, they're not, the density doesn't come into there because they're putting a wall in there.
Right, right.
But you get my drift though, if you have a really bastard piece of property, you could be donating all that forty percent steep slopes, all that kind of good stuff.
But at the same time, there has to be some maximum limit on the density you can put in because density is one of the things that almost every PRD, the neighbors complain about.
Yes.
These houses are too close together compared to what exists around it. So, we gotta be real careful with that.
Well, Dan, it would certainly be appropriate to put capital in it. I mean, that's not, that's not a problem.
But what pops back into the equation is that if you go, the other thing you suggested, Dan, which is to provide like a minimum lot area?
No, I didn't say anything about minimum water area. I played with the setback, but I didn't say anything that lot had to have be a minimum size.
You said the size of the structure so that we all get a little...
So, if you did put that little caveat in there, if somebody came in with these miniature houses and let's say you had a lot area of a quarter acre, if he wants to be stupid enough to go put something the size of a shed on there and burn all of his lot area by putting, shame, I think he's, he's not gonna make money.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, but I threw out there minimum square footage on the dwelling unit.
On the dwelling.
Lot can all talk about that and read something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I know, you know, Chris and all the research he did, a lot of them have minimum lot size. In some cases, it looked like the lot size would be the same as if it was a straight development, so what are you gaining by going to PRD? Because you're not gaining anything, especially if you're setting aside a certain percentage of open space.
I agree.
So, I, you know, I'm trying to avoid getting into that mess.
When you're saying open space, does that like refer to undisturbed open space?
Yes.
You're not just talking permanent, I'll do it later, Dave, are you, or is that early?
I mean, in, in the world of open space, there's passive and active open space. Passive is usually where you just basically leave out a bunch of, you know, picker bushes. But active space is where they've not graded it so that you could put a...
Playground.
Playground or whatever, bocce courts, whatever. Now, I can tell you that since I've been the engineer, which is a long time now, is we, your ordinance has a lot of provisions where the developer, as an option, can go build a playground system up there and that the township could assume ownership of that without paying that eight hundred seventy-five dollars per house. But I can tell you in forty years I've been your engineer, is that you've always taken the money. In fact, it's almost been to the point where that's the way it is.
Mike makes a good point, though. We probably, as we fine tune this, we probably do wanna pay more attention to undisturbed areas.
Well, you said a percentage value of the designated open space must be X percent.
Versus the same, the same open space, which could be, cut down all trees, cut down on it.
That applies to the buffer area as well as the open space.
Right.
You don't wanna cut down all those trees and then have...
And call it notes. That's right, that's right.
Well, right now, the way that the SALDO is structured, you're gonna be severely penalized if you start cutting down trees.
Right.
The loophole in it is, in the tree ordinance, is that if you go in there and tree harvest the entire site like the Millers did, for instance, all you have to do is wait five years and now you're having the trees that are left. So, I mean, if, when I saw these ordinances being developed and if I was a property owner in the township, I would give a timber guy and completely harvest every tree that I possibly felt that's, in fact, I would overharvest it. I don't think we wanna broadcast that.
He's said it twice, like, this year and last year, he's explained the process of how you could get more money off your property and then sell it and avoid the law.
But if you overharvest it to the point that all you have left is three inch diameter trees left, that type of thing, now all of a sudden, when you come in to do your tree planting, you're paying virtually zero in the equation. So, it kind of defeats the purpose. Now, I mean, there's, there's a way that we can tweak that, but raising the price of a tree you can't have is definitely not the way to do it. What you wanna do is you wanna play it on five years. And you can't, and all your properties are ten years.
That's what we're saying.
Works for both.
Go ahead, I was, I was waiting to make sure you're not...
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Chris, I know you're anxious.
Discussion about, you know, the limits on density, the local density and some, I think what we have to keep in mind is... I think one thing we have to keep in mind is, you know, in cases extreme, you wind up with something like a low-density residential area where now you have this little village residential cluster in it, right? So essentially, you've changed the zone down, you know, two stages by allowing high and higher density. So I think, Mr. Ted, if you're talking about, you know, imposing the new lot size, that sort of addresses that, that problem.
Right. The key, the key point is to, to a right, going, going by is going to see that little village cluster, you know, from the roadways. And this is the open space, the buffer zone, which should have all the natural growth in it, big trees to block it. And I don't think anybody would, I don't think they'd do that because have to be able to market the property. And that's why I'd like to see here if Preston get his views on, you know, what would be a minimum size that someone would want to put a half-million-dollar house on. And maybe then set some minimum might be worthwhile. But at the same time, it's also, no developer is going to develop something that themselves, at least they hope not. I think it does happen occasionally.
It's just I miss, I guess my point is, yeah, we saw earlier tonight, this is zoning map with defined zones and people sort of have an expectation of what is in a particular area. And I just want to say, I think we should exercise some caution when we're allowing these deviations from what's already defined. You know, if you decide, hey, I want to hire a business area, then fine, let's change the zoning map and just say that.
Most people, I would have an expectation once you've lived in areas, they want everything to look the same as what they had. Okay, that may not agree with what the zoning map says. It might be, you know, you might be low density, right adjacent to MBR, village residential, you know.
Yeah, so that's.
People don't like, people basically don't like change.
And a lot of people.
It's always been, it's always been.
A lot of people assess things by, they drive around, they look and see, oh, here's what it looks like, and they expect that's the way it's going to be. But on any hand, I would say if the zoning map permits, you know, I don't know, you know, the waste disposal facility next to their, the lot they're buying, that's on them, right? And they should look at the zoning map before, that's something they can do. They could look at the zoning map and see what is permitted and what's not permitted before they buy the property. I think the PRD throws sort of a monkey wrench in all that because now all of a sudden, you look and say, oh, I'm buying this lot. The lot next door is residential, and then you find out that, oh, the developer can come in and increase the density, you know, twofold right now on the current rules, and that's sort of a surprise, but like even on the single, the loophole that's in there.
But that twofold increase, what I was writing, there's a, it's only a small portion of the total and it's still the same.
Yep.
But I get your point. I mean, people can't be expected to anticipate that.
And from what I've heard of talking to people, that's a lot of, that's a, a big source of the agitation is, you know, like I'm a fucked up, I'm a fucked up person. All of a sudden, you're in an area, you have all these single-family homes, and next thing you know, someone's putting in, you know, eighty townhomes in the one single family.
One of the, one of the things I would mention is that if it's a, the type of lawn can exceed a certain percentage of the total invested single-family residence. So I'm kind of pushing that way and saying, limit how many townhomes in a, in a family or something. Which could cause for some variety, but it wasn't ready to come almost totally like what Dan said with, with one single-family residence in the township.
Yeah, that's diversity, of, of lifestyles, and that's just a problem.
Let me just paint one other vision here for a little bit, while I take the first seconds. Forget the ten acres, the vision, hundred acres, it's a problem. Okay. Which is what the PRD is set for. So when they talk about buffers and having a, a need to go aside, and the variety network, variety, where the variety comes in is you're putting in on this hundred-acre piece of property, let, let's say, eight, a hundred homes. But with that comes a clubhouse and a store and a laundry room and all these other facilities that augments that, those hundred homes. And that's the reason why there's the buffer there, because you're creating something, it's almost a village, is what you're creating inside this hundred-acre piece of property. That's the way the PRD, the verbiage was set up. Unfortunately, when you start getting PRDs down into the ten-acre range, and there's nothing houses, it's distorted. And that's where everybody's getting screwed up because this, that verbiage that everybody combines is geared for this hundred-acre piece of property to a hundred-piece property. And that's what I think we're trying to change here in the cabinet's.